We'll call the meeting to order. We'll look at the agenda. And are there any changes that anyone would like to make? Seeing no changes, is there someone who'd like to make a motion to accept? Penny, thank you. Second? Sherri, thank you. All those in favor? It's unanimous. Thank you. Now, the Board of Ed minutes, October 6th. We need to have a move to accept the minutes or approve them. Motion? Deanna? Jen? All those that are in favor, please say, raise your hands and signify. That's unanimous. Oh, same because of someone not being here for the meeting. Thank you. Now we'll have comments from the public. To ensure the public's right to be heard, the Board has set aside time during the meeting for public comments. Two minutes are allotted to each speaker and a maximum of 15 minutes to each subject. Is there anyone who would like to speak this evening? There being no one who wishes to speak this evening, we'll then move on to the action items. And for the first, after the comments, we'll move on to the action items and the superintendent's I'd like to begin with some background in the search for the New Canaan superintendent of schools. On March 17th in 2014, the Board accepted the resignation of former Superintendent Dr. Mary Kolik. Since her retirement date was to be within three and a half months, the Board followed precedent permitted by Connecticut law on the freedom of information to appoint the members of the New Canaan Board of Education as the search committee for the position of interim superintendent of schools and/or superintendent of schools. On April 29th, 2014, after the search committee's meeting, analysis of candidates, and discussion, the Board of Education voted at this meeting to accept their recommendation to appoint Dr. Brian Lutze interim superintendent of schools for the period starting on July 1st, 2014 through June 30th, 2015. Tonight, the search committee is reporting out of its work in identifying a candidate for the position of superintendent of schools. The search committee is pleased to bring forward Dr. Lutze, a man who has proved himself to be visionary, highly qualified, and energetic leader for consideration by the Board of Education for the position of superintendent of the New Canaan Public Schools. Can I have a motion on this recommendation? Sherri?
Yes, I'd like to move that the Board of Education appoint Dr. Brian Lutze as the superintendent of schools effective November 1st, 2014. And I'd like to further move that the chairperson of the Board of Education be authorized to execute the proposed contract on behalf of the Board of Education with respect to Dr. Lutze's employment as superintendent of schools.
Thank you. Is there a second? Mr. Grass?
I would be honored to second Dr. Lutze's, the recommendation for Dr. Lutze's appointment. I think that we rarely get an opportunity to make a decision as important as this. You know, it comes along once every few years and hopefully not for many to come. But it's, it's an important thing we do. It's probably the most, arguably, the most important thing this Board does. And we've been very fortunate to have, albeit truncated, a trial period. And I'm quite convinced that some high-performing school district would be the beneficiary of your talents. And I'm glad that the timing worked out so that it's us and that we're not chasing and trying to beg you back in a couple of years. So I'm honored to, to second your, your appointment.
Thank you. There is a motion on the floor which is seconded. Ms. Carlson, would you begin the discussion?
I'd like to recommend that we offer Dr. Brian Lutze the position of superintendent of schools for the town of New Canaan. Sorry, I'm gonna wait for him to... No, that's okay. I just, I don't like to talk to your back, so I'm gonna start over. Anyway, so I'd like to recommend that we offer you the position of superintendent of schools for the town of New Canaan because you've demonstrated the ability to lead this district over the last four months in your role as interim superintendent. You've proven your ability to work with all the key stakeholders in this community, be they students, parents, teachers, administrators, or elected town officials. I've heard nothing but positive feedback from those in the community on your, on your work thus far. And I'm always impressed with Dr. Lutze's collaborative leadership style. While I know he has a vision for our schools in the next generation, he does the hard work of consensus building. That is the trademark of a leader. I enthusiastically support the naming of Dr. Brian Lutze as superintendent for New Canaan Public Schools.
Thank you. Can we hear from some other members of the Board? Jen?
When we first met as a search committee, we all were talking about qualities and characteristics that we were looking at. We're looking for a strong leader. We were looking for someone with a deep understanding of education, someone with a vision for our schools, not just for today, but for in the future. And in that, we have definitely found that in you. Additionally, like Deanna said, the feedback we've gotten from the community and from the parents has been overwhelmingly positive. We had a meeting with a parent group, our Board of Ed liaisons, a few weeks ago, and we were just being peppered with questions on what was going on with, you know, the hire of the superintendent and how would they hoped it would be you. So we're really psyched about that. Dr. Lutze, you are humble, you are passionate about what you do, you care for our kids. And I remember you saying this in one of our meetings, that you said that you really, really, you know, love challenges and you desire a challenge. And so we are, you know, I am so confident in a yes to appoint you as superintendent.
Thank you.
So, thank you.
Allison, did you want to add to?
I just want to say welcome. We're thrilled to have you. I've been in several search committees, as have other members of our, our group here. And we understand that the talent pool that's out there, and we are so pleased to have someone of your talent and your potential, you know, to join us as the, as a superintendent of schools. And I trust that our community is gonna show you the respect and the confidence and the support that you deserve over the next, hopefully, many, many years.
Thank you. Sangita?
Superintendent's day job is not an easy one, and it's, it's big shoes to fill. And we are so happy that we have someone who can really fill them. There's not that many people around that can do such a fabulous job. You're great as our principal here at the high school. I got a chance to know you then. And on paper, you look fantastic when we appoint you as interim superintendent. And you kind of come through, as we've seen you the last several months, you know, working as interim superintendent, leading, reaching out to the community. And as, you know, one of the parents had mentioned, it's that you also have a vision, not just about the grand vision for the whole district, but also you're looking at what each individual school needs are. And that's really nice for people to see, that you really connect, you know, both in the grand, bigger level, and at the more micro level as well. We are, again, so enthusiastic. You were presented with an award for, you know, being the most, the best person to succeed as a superintendent. And I think, you know, we are fortunate to have snagged you to be our superintendent here for the school district. Thank you.
Jean?
Doctor, many school issues have two or more sides to them. Usually, both legitimate and always trade-offs are present. I think it's the nature of the job, probably. Most of your decisions are of that nature. And you have demonstrated great knowledge and sensitivity to such situations. An example is about eight months ago, you were at a town council meeting. I believe it was on a budget matters. But someone asked about the question of school kids, students going around with their iPhones and their tablets, and their constant interacting with computers, which is going to increase probably as we get more and more devices. And yet, the yin or the yang of that is that the need for students to socialize and not to lose their socialization skills at the, to gain all these computer skills or information skills. And this was not even on the agenda. Yet your answer was articulate. It was knowledgeable. It was sensitive. And it showed your ability to, in fact, address these issues and these needs, which you will be doing all the time. And I thank you for that.
Thank you. Penny?
I'm very pleased with this nomination. And I also feel very fortunate to have had the ability to work closely with you on the X to One Committee, as well as the Saks Building Committee and the South School Building Committee these past few months. And what I've noticed is that you do have all the right qualities for being a leader. You're hardworking, you're insightful, you're forward-thinking, you're creative, you're solution-oriented, and that's fantastic. And we're lucky to be able to put forward this nomination. I think when we interviewed you, you impressed me when you spoke so passionately about how education is at the foundation of a wonderful democracy. And so I'm thrilled that you're gonna be the educational leader for the New Canaan Public Schools.
Thank you for this discussion. Yes?
So I just, I have to expand upon the official nature of my motion with some personal comments as well.
Yes, please do.
And I just wanna dito what everyone's saying. And I just, I do feel like, Dr. Lutze, you are uniquely qualified to serve as superintendent, given your 18 years of experience in education, your technology background, which I think is very exciting for the district going forward, and also your proven track record and the relationships you've built at New Canaan High School. And like Jen mentioned, I've received so much positive feedback from parents and other stakeholders during your tenure that I know the community is gonna rejoice tonight when they hear, when they hear this announcement. But as a board member and also as a parent of a second, sixth, and eighth grader, I'm just thrilled and excited about the future of New Canaan Public Schools under your leadership. So, congratulations.
Now, it's been moved and seconded that the Board of Education appoint Dr. Brian Lutze as the superintendent of schools effective November 1st, 2014, and moved further that the chairperson of the Board of Education be authorized to execute the proposed contract on behalf of the Board of Education with respect to Dr. Lutze's employment as superintendent of schools. Can I see everyone, please indicate by raising your hand if you indeed want to. The motion then carries, and it was, and a complete vote, everybody, an agreement. Dr. Lutze, congratulations.
Thank you.
We're confident that we found the best.
Thank you so much. Your comments were so, so thoughtful and kind, and I'm tempted not to say anything because I don't know where to go but down. But the, truly, it's, it's an honor and a privilege to, to be chosen as the next superintendent of schools in New Canaan. The Board of Education's staff, parents, community are among the finest anywhere. And I'm honored to work alongside and along with such talented people and people who are so dedicated to the education of our kids. In 2005, Steve Jobs shared some advice with Stanford grads that has been resonating with me recently. He said, "Your work is going to fill a large part of your life. And the only way to be truly satisfied is to do what you believe is great work. And the only way to do great work is to love what you do." As I think about that, I realize how lucky I am to be able to do what I absolutely love to do every day. I get to work with a Board of Education, colleagues, staff, students, parents, and a community who are fully, wholeheartedly dedicated to the same things that I believe are the most important things we can do. The excellence of the New Canaan Public Schools, I believe, will only continue to grow in the years ahead. And the fact that we're such an outstanding district today really is inspiring to, makes it inspiring to consider the great things that we have ahead. Being an administrator, let alone superintendent these last few months, it would be impossible without a supportive and forgiving wife and family. So I do just want to quickly just mention that my wife and daughters are here with us tonight. And I couldn't do this without their love and support as well. And I did promise not to embarrass them, so I'm gonna move on. But I'm very, I'm very glad that they had a chance to meet you and that they're here with me tonight. Thank you for this wonderful opportunity. I could stay up here speaking all night and thanking you because it's truly his, well, it's an emotional moment for me because it's something that I have truly invested my heart and soul in these past few months. And education is something that I true, I do believe is the single most important endeavor anyone can put their mind and heart to as a career. And to do it here in New Canaan with people who are supportive, who are dedicated, who truly believe that every single student deserves the absolute best, is, there's no better place to do it. So, thank you very much for this. And instead of talking all night, I think we'll get to our, our agenda. And I'll be very happy to do so without the interim after my title for the very first time. So, thank you.
Thank you very much for those kind words. At this point, we'll move on to the second action item. Although it's hard not to enjoy every bit of it, which is the South School Building Project. And we have a move to approve the plans, specifications, and estimates for the South School Building Project that was dated October 9th, 2014. And did you want? That sounds good. We'll, our wonderful committee member on the South School Project has been Penny Ration, and she's going to introduce and provide some more information with capable help, I
Well, Nancy Harris couldn't be here, who's the chair of our committee, so she asked me just to introduce the topic. I mean, as you remember, we were here in May, and you all voted to approve the topic and Phase 1 of the plans and specifications. So the motion before us tonight is to approve the budget and Phase 2 of the plans and specifications for the South School Project. And we have Jean Torone, our project, our owner's representative here, to answer any questions that you might have, as well as architect Bill Petricelli, Bill Silver from Silver Petricelli, sorry. And I'm pleased to report that the presentation you got is already out of date since it had the word interim next to Dr. Lutze's title. So you'll have to amend that in your, in your mind. I don't think you'll have a lot of questions, but I will turn it over to Jean and Bill.
I think we, I downloaded it.
Did you just put it on the computer?
Yeah.
Oh.
Okay. We're ready to go. So, just a reminder again, I'm, I represent the town of Canaan as the Honors Representative. And we've had on our team so far Jim Olson and Amy Valencourt from Time Bond, who did all the environmental work for us so far, and will continue to do so in 2015 when we start the second phase of this work. Again, with me is Bill Silver from Principal Silver Petricelli Associates. And also partner of the team was Stephen Smith, who was doing a lot of the legwork for us on this project. Nancy Harris is our chair of our building committee. Penny Ration's our vice chair. Jean Goodman, obviously secretary. And we have a couple of members here from town council, Joe Palladino, and obviously Bob Willoughby from Facilities. And again, if we had known the interim would now be the superintendent of schools, congratulations. And we can't go on without saying many thanks and support for Mary that she's done for us throughout this project up until when she retired. So we had great, great working relationship with her. And Joanne is, of course, has been great support and information for us to continue this project. And Roy helping us out as well. So, background, the Board last year, May 5th, approved the $2.6 million for the project, which was basically to get through Phase 1 and Phase 2 of the work. In May, we started the bidding of the, of the first phase of the work was primarily the environmental side of the, of the remediation. And all that work was completed on time and within our budget for this first very successful results, and we're exactly where we need to be so far. So, what are we doing next? What we, the, the next phase of the project, which will start at the same time when school gets out, hopefully we won't have a lot of snow days, the removal of the remaining upper clear storey glass, there's a few sections that we didn't touch last year, which were primarily around the gymnasium and the cafeteria. And then we're gonna start downstairs, which are down, the lower level, which were all the windows on the lower level. Concurrently, because of the work we did this summer, we're also gonna start the replacement everywhere that you see plywood and the nice tieback coating. That'll also happen the same time we're doing the remediation. We also were lucky to incorporate some of the new state requirements for security improvements on the lower level, so those are also gonna be implemented as part of this project. And if the budget allows, we'll be doing some canopy improvements on the bus loop. And I'll just flip through these. You've all seen them. We can certainly go back to them. This is some of the renderings that Bill's office has put together on the new look of the, of the facade and the elevations. The panels on the lower, the blue that you see there, is a functional security piece to act as the 44-inch minimum height and is not glass, it's a, it's a panel. The windows will be operable, and the upper, the upper little band that you see there on the lower level will be operable windows as well. This is the bus loop. We're also gonna restore some of the windows that were taken out of the cafeteria. We're gonna extend that glass to what it used to be. Right now, you see just a big brick patch there. We're gonna take that back out and restore it back to what it used to look like. And this is kind of rendering of the bus loop with some improvements on the canopy and the fenestration around the, the front entryway. So the timeline right now is once, and if the Board of Education approves the Phase 2 of the project, we will be going to the local plan review, with a set of plans for them to start their review as early as tomorrow, giving them a couple of weeks. Once they have their approval, we go to the state for their plan completion, yeah, plan completion test, which should take, I don't know, a couple of weeks? Couple of weeks, with the intention of trying to get out to bid middle of November. This is a great bidding climate for us. The winter, fourth quarter, first quarter are ideal times to bid projects out. Contractors are getting slow, they're looking for work for next year. So we're hoping for a good bidding climate for us. We're gonna allow, because of the holidays, you know, a little, about a month for the bidding process. And if we need to extend that, we can certainly do that. The intent is to have an award early in January, allow plenty of time for the shop drawing and procurement of the glass and all the products that we need way in advance of the end of the school year. The reason for this is it's a long lead item, it's about 16 weeks for some of this product. We're gonna double that just to make sure, you can't put it in if you don't have it because the schedule's very aggressive. And we want to make sure that we give them no excuse for getting it done. So again, ideally, we'll start the demolition right around 6:17, barring any snow days from the school. The budget you're gonna approve today, we've, we've completed Phase 1, and that was about $222,000 of the budget. And Phase 2 and Phase 3 are roughly about $2.6 million is what we're projecting the cost to be right now. We've built in the escalation for 2015. And we've run through the numbers with the committee and myself and our team to make sure that it's still appropriate for this project. And we, we are confident that that is, the number is correct. So the action items for the committee today is the Board of Education needs to approve the plans, specifications, and estimate for the Phase 2 window replacement for South School Project. That's all I have. Any questions?
I don't see any, I don't see any questions. I think you've been very thorough and in the past have provided us a lot of information to, so you're literally building upon our last meetings that we've had.
Yes, I mean, it should be, yeah, really. Thank you.
That's, so it looks as if then that we are ready to have someone to move on that? We did have, we did have this. All we need is the vote tonight? Yes?
Yes, I move to approve the plans, specifications, and estimates for the South School Building Project dated October 9th, 2014.
Thank you. Second, Sangita? Everyone who is in favor of that, please signify by raising your hand. And it is a unanimous vote. Congratulations, and we thank you very much. And our thanks to the committee and also Jean Goodman, who's on the team, that, part of the committee. We thank you for the time both of you have given and the, definitely the help from your, the experts. Thank you. Our next item is the, looking at the staff utilization enrollment, we have Mr. Casp making a presentation to us. We have received wonderful booklets and ample information here and, which we appreciate and realize that a great deal of time has been invested to make that possible for us.
I have all your notes in there as well. They're gonna be just here for you. So, thank you for the, again, this year, for the opportunity to present important information about our district staffing and enrollment for this and future years. On your tables, distributed two updated reports. The green and the supplementary analysis, supplementary analysis. There were some minor changes that we made today, so I wanted to give you the updated reports. It was a very minor staffing number change. So in order to, excuse me, think about staffing and enrollment, we compile a considerable amount of data from a variety of sources into these four reports that you have. And it should be noted that all of the reports are posted on our website. So these documents, the memorandum on enrollment projections analyzes the information and reports provided by our demographer based on past, present, and projected enrollment in the New Canaan Public Schools. The staff utilization and enrollment report is a comprehensive look at our certified staffing for 2014, 15. It has many uses as a source of information and serves as a standard reference throughout the year. There's also a separate staff utilization report with data on all non-certified staff members. These reports contain summary student enrollment data at all schools for each grade and each content area. Also included is enrollment and staffing in special education, faculty leadership, and The supplemental analysis report provides additional perspectives on the data in the staff utilization and enrollment report. For example, includes an FTE comparison of this year with last year, a look at which classes may be under district guidelines and which are over, and a look at enrollment in special education programs. So because the data is presented from several different perspectives, including different levels of the system, specific grades, core and encore subjects, classes and sections, it's rather voluminous. My presentation for you tonight is guided by these questions. What data points best capture and convey the current status of our district enrollment? And what are the key points that emerge from an examination of the forecast data? So hopefully, by focusing on these two questions here tonight, you'll be able to have a clear snapshot of where we were statistically as of October 1st, 2014, and may also have some sense of where we might be headed in the future. As with any presentation, the data provided in the reports is quite detailed, and our report today provides an overview of that data. So let's get a look at the school district perspective first. We start with a snapshot of the entire district. We have increased enrollment over the, or, over the last six years, we have increased enrollment by 131 students. At 4,168, it's an increase of 28 students K-12 over last year. This increase is spread across the schools, but primarily, as you all know, virtually most of that increase was in our kindergarten program. We have 25 more students than our demographer's projection from last year. Overall, the impact of increased enrollment came in the primary grades, and we needed to add kindergarten and grade one staff to stay within our guidelines. to add kindergarten and grade one staff to stay within our guidelines. This slide takes a look at our total K-12 enrollment. And when we add the pre-K program, excuse me, the pre-K program and students who are outplaced, you arrive at the district total enrollment of 4,220 students. And this, we could compare to 4,197 or 23 more students than last year's total. In looking at our school district's historical enrollment, using our pre-K through 12 enrollment this year of 4,203, 10 years ago, 2004, we're at 4,087, 116 students higher. This number represents the second highest enrollment in our history. Only two years ago, we were just above that at 4,219. This slow but steady growth is also predicted for our future. 10 years from now, for example, the NASDAQ reports in '24, '25 school year, we are projected to rise to 4,434 or 231 students higher than we are today. So now we can take a look at each level in terms of our enrollment. As I wrote in the memorandum on enrollment projections, even though our overall projections were accurate within less than 1%, our kindergarten projection was well over. Our demographics indicated that this was primarily attributed to families moving into New Canaan. The demographer noted in his report that kindergarten is, quote, "the place to be" in New Canaan. This year, our kindergarten came in at 302 students, 44 over projection, up by 32 from the previous year of 270. Overall, elementary increased by 64 students. Here's a further breakdown of the elementary enrollment. You can see that the work done three years ago to balance out our three elementary schools still works out, still holds up today with fairly balanced numbers among the three schools. East School this year showed an increase of 36 students, South an increase of 12, and West with 16 more students overall than last year. Monitoring student enrollment at this level is important as section numbers have, are at 29 classrooms being used at East and West School. Now, the Saks enrollment had a slight decrease this year, but our demographer is forecasting an increase next year of 43 students to 1,335, and projects enrollment to rise steadily over the next five years to increase to 1,409 in the 2021 school year, according to NASDAQ. We expect continued monitoring of enrollment at this level over the next several years to be very important. Simply stated, we know that we need more classroom space at Saks right now. In meetings held recently by the Enrollment and Capacity Committee, we discussed that in addition to East and West being very close to capacity, Saks Middle School is over. There is something, this is something that we are looking to address in the short term, but we may also need a longer-term solution. New Canaan High School. New Canaan High School's enrollment peaked at 1,348 in the 2010-11 school year. This year, it's at 1,251, and is projected to decrease next year, according to NASDAQ, our demographer, by eight students. New Canaan High School enrollment will then begin climbing to well over 1,342 during the 2019-2020 school year, five years from now, as the middle school bubble moves up into the high school. In special education, our K-12 special education enrollment is 381 students on October 1, a prevalence rate of 9.1%. The special education student population increased this year due to a number of move-ins, as you are aware, from 364 last year to 381 today. That's a prevalence rate this year of 9.1% as compared to 8.8% last year and 9.2% two years ago. Out-of-district placements are up by two, from 15 last year to 17 this year. Now, we'll take a look at the enrollment and class size guidelines. This chart shows that for this year, the percent of classes overall in the district that are at or below the board guidelines. As shown on page one of the Staff Utilization and Enrollment Report, class size guidelines for kindergarten through third-grade classes are from 16 to 20. Shown here is that at the elementary level, the percent of classes at or below the guidelines went from 99% at or below the guidelines last year to 81% this year. This was primarily due to increased enrollment in grades two and three. But the majority of these classes that are over in grades two and three are only over by one student at 21 students, the vast majority of those classes. The guidelines for grades four through eight are 20 to 24 students. Saks typically has a small percentage of classes over the guidelines and many sections under the guidelines due to the structure of the team program. For the high school in grades nine through 12, the guidelines are from 14 to 25 students per section, and there was a modest reduction in the percentage over the guidelines this year, only 5.9% this year. Now we can move from class size to levels of staffing. And as you can see on this chart, the number of certified staff increased slightly overall this year by .4 FTE compared to last year. The specifics of where those ups and downs were that landed us here, but I do have those, but they are basically overall, we had a picture of increasing enrollment increases, and we have stayed fairly flat in terms of certified staffing in our district. At the elementary level, by school, you can see that from, at East, went from, to 45 FTE this year, from 42.5 up to two and a half teachers. South School went down by 1.5 teachers. West School remained fairly flat, only up .1 FTE. At the secondary level, Saks Middle School, this year at 111.70, is up 1.4 FTEs. For this school year, the high school is down .9. Special education staffing. Our FTE was, is 65.6, full-time equivalents for special education educators, up half a teacher or half a FTE this year, primarily due to some increasing enrollment. Now we go back to enrollment a bit, but looking at projections for next year. Taking a look at the demographer's projection, the estimates, the estimates are that the district as a whole will increase next year by 41 students. Examine by level, they project an increase of six students at the elementary level. In secondary, the demographer projects an increase enrollment of 43 students at Saks Middle School next year from 1292 to 1335. And at the same time, they expect the high school to decrease by eight students for next year. Much of our attention is focused on planning for the middle school in regards to staffing and space. Part of our current effort of the Enrollment and Capacity Committee was to review the data and make recommendations to the board. And we will have more in a few minutes. So overall, those are the highlights in a very brief way. And so what are the implications of all that data? What have we learned? What else can we do? So what have we learned? We learned that the demographer, by and large, is usually accurate, often within 1% to 2% of actual, sometimes even closer. The NASDAQ enrollment projection totals from the fall of 2013 came within 25 students of the actual. Grade K through 12 enrollment total for October 2014, it's a difference of .6%. The largest factor now at work, which will have the greatest effect upon future enrollments, is the resumption of in-migration of families with school-age children, according to the demographer. For next year, the enrollment projections seem to imply that we are unlikely to experience a major increase in enrollment at the elementary or the high school level. However, Saks will increase by 43 students and necessitate the need for considering additional classroom space. The challenges that New Canaan faces as a relatively small school district seem to arise from the data we received from NASDAQ on the move-ins that impacted our kindergarten planning. For next year, enrollment projections seem to imply that we are unlikely to experience a major increase or decrease in enrollment overall, except for Saks. In the next three years, K-4 enrollment seemed to be holding flat over these next three years. Grades five through eight, over the next three years, to grow by up to 63 students. And the high school level to increase by about 53 students in the next three years. So the work of the Enrollment and Capacity Committee this year has outlined some recommendations as we thought about enrollment and capacity. We are at 29 sections each at West and East School. Though the projections for next year indicate a flat enrollment at the elementary level, any further section increases could result in the use of a special area room as a general education classroom. At Saks Middle School, with rising enrollment projected over the coming years, consideration should be given to the conversion of a computer lab and a language lab for classroom space for next year. Our demographer, even with consideration of the above, describes our enrollment as growing from our present enrollment of 4,168 to 4,380 over these next five years, an increase of 212 students. The district and the community need to work in concert with professional demographers to gather and analyze local data that will help inform important decisions regarding resources and space issues, short-term and long-term. Finally, I would like to take this opportunity to thank the Human Resources Department staff for their hours spent on reviewing data and helping put all of these reports together. And also, many thanks to our superintendent and all of our principals sitting over here who reviewed all of the data from their schools and whose help was invaluable in the preparation of these reports. All of our administrators served on the Enrollment and Capacity Committee as well, along with two of our board members. So we've come to the place where I can try to answer questions that you might have. We have the principals here as well to, for any comments or questions that you may have.
Can I just start by saying thank you also to you for the work that's been put into this? This is a tremendous group of documents, and to have an update at the last minute of the staffing was extraordinary. So thank you very much. Would you want any of the principals to come up to assist you in answers, Mr. Mercedes and the Saks question?
Well, I would say that one of the questions that I know will be on your minds is how to think about changes for additional classroom space for next year at Saks Middle School. So if I can invite Greg to come up, and he can talk a little bit about what some potential plans that the Enrollment and Capacity Committee are thinking about in order for you to help us take the next step in moving in this direction. Greg?
Thank you, Gary. Gary already introduced the general concept of taking existing computer space and converting it into classroom space. It's really in keeping with the overall movement in the industry to make our technology mobile versus permanent. In fact, if we are considering building a new middle school, I doubt our architects would be proposing permanent lab space. So overall, that's the big idea. Smaller question is how soon and how many labs? So we have two computer labs with PCs upstairs in the second floor of the library. We have one audio cassette lab, which is used for world language proficiency assessment and instruction right below. And then on the other side of the school, we have a VPA lab, Visual and Performing Arts Lab, of Mac desktops. I need two classrooms for next year to inherit the seventh grade. The sixth grade is currently at 370 students. So that burgeoning group needs to be satisfied. We think the smartest recommendation is to take one of the PC labs upstairs, still keeping one as a safeguard and as a way to implement some current programming. And then also to repurpose the room right below, which is the audio or language lab, and put that delivery system into mobile cart-like function. As most world language labs look today, they are not permanent. They either go into a room, or they're housed in a spot where they're distributed. So that's sort of the big idea and the small implementation step we anticipate for next year.
Any questions? Allison?
I wanted to thank all the principals for their creativity that we've asked for over the last umpteen years, really, in terms of the increased population. But I especially want to thank you, Mr. Mercido, because you've been nothing short of a magician in terms of, you know, this increased population. And we keep continually asking you to fit this larger population into a fixed amount of space. I know in the past, sometimes I sense you've been hesitant to ask for resources from us, because I know you're very mindful of our budget. We really appreciate that. But I would definitely encourage you. We all see the writing on the wall. You know, we know education's changing. Nobody knows the inner workings of the, of Saks Middle School better than you do as a long-term principal there. So we certainly trust your judgment and your suggestions. And I would encourage you to come forth with suggestions for resources for the school if need be, because, again, I think we all see the writing on the wall. We see the population increasing more and more. And I think we've asked about as much from you as we can possibly ask. So thank you again for all that you do for us.
Sankita?
Yes, Mr. Mercido, I mean, it is, you know, ingenious to try to think of how to repurpose the space and using those computer labs and making it mobile. I think that's, you know, wonderful. That's the way things are going. However, I know we are also short on storage. So even if you put things onto carts, you have to have a place to put them. And I'm just concerned whether you have enough space, then maybe put in that AV lower floors, or enough space to put all those units to be able to move them, shift them back and forth.
We are looking at some space that we're going to convert on the upstairs hallway adjacent to the Library Media Center. Currently, our world language director, Lizette D'Amico, is housed in that space, and she plans in the next marking period or so to be moving her office over here to the high school. And that space will go back to being used for technology storage.
And I would kind of go along with what my colleague, a board member, said, you know, about resources and space, because I know that you are very short on that and you are juggling. And I know that even you've taken away the faculty lounge area to, you know, make space for the students. And, you know, just for the sanity of everyone, you need to have space for certain purposes and for collaboration such. So, I do think we need to kind of look at what we can do. And we might have to do a short fix for now, but we have to look at this, you know, with the numbers that Mr. Cassidy just mentioned, that, you know, that it's going to start increasing. And so, we have to do our, start our planning now. Thank you.
Penny?
Greg, I was just wondering if you could talk a little bit. I know that Saks was designed for 1,200 students. We're already in the mid-1,300s, and we've added some program since Saks was originally designed. So, I'm a little concerned with these constraints. It looks like we're in pretty good shape for next year. But I want to understand, kind of, maybe if you could address this issue and at the point where the constraints of the building will constrain the program that we might otherwise want to offer the middle school students and just...
Sure. You know, you look for trends and patterns when you look at the past and then into the future. So, if we look back at 2005 and 2006, and then six and seven, those were the last peak high enrollment years for the middle school, roughly nine, 10 years ago, where we peaked at about 1,338, according to the historical enrollment charts that you have. And since then, we've sort of leveled off and lived in the 12s in terms of our enrollment in the 1,200s. And now, as you see, we're projected for the next five years to be living in the 13s and climbing somewhat quickly through the 13s. So, during the time we were living in the 12s, even though we were over capacity, we still were able to be imaginative with space needs. I was, I was in the need of delivering both mandated and innovative programming. So, in terms of mandated programming, you'll remember that we inaugurated a reading intervention lab during the last 10 years. We also inaugurated a learning center classroom, similar to the learning center or the academic center here at the high school. We added a Mandarin program and classroom. And most recently this year, we've added a STEM classroom and program. So, those initiatives and mandates worked well as we were living in the 12s. The question ahead is, how do we maintain our desire for innovation and our need to fulfill mandates at a time when the enrollment is also progressing through the 13s? So, as I said, the short-term view would be, we have four computer labs that can be phased and repurposed over time. There's one last space, which is a very large storage space the facilities department is using and my VPA department. It's behind the auditorium hallway where we have lots of musical sets and other sort of paraphernalia that needs to be stored. There may be some creative way of looking at finding some other storage space. We may have to repurpose that storage room at some point, three to five years out, for classroom purposes, if we're going to continue to meet mandates and also innovation.
Other questions? Sherry?
Greg, I also want to commend you for your very creative make-it-work strategies. But as a parent of current middle schoolers, I just want to make sure that we don't kind of push the pause button to get through this bubble phase, that we need to, as New Canaan Public Schools, we need to continue to push forward with innovative new programs. And if that means looking at, you know, portable classrooms or whatever it may mean, I just, I want to make sure that we're continuing to think out of the box and, again, coming back to the budget cycle and asking for those resources. Because I hate to think that we're just going to hold things still, you know, while we've got these bigger classes moving through. The other thing that concerns me is the percent of classes above guidelines. And I know that Gary mentioned that at the elementary, there was a disappointing drop from 99 to 81 percent. But at Saks, there was something like a drop from 96 to 89 percent. And those class guidelines are bigger. So, when you're pushing above that guideline, to me, that's an even more serious concern because you're pushing above 24 kids in a classroom. And again, coming back to the budget cycle, I think we need to be mindful and make, I'm asking you to make sure you're presenting us with the data of those classes above guidelines so that we can then go to the town and make sure that we've got the resources to keep those numbers in check. But thank you for all that you do because I know you are working as hard as you can to make it work.
Thank you.
Mr. Chris? Scott?
Greg, it seems like all of the schools are doing more with less, you know, the less, the total staffing went up by a half of, less than a half of one, and the enrollment went up by, you know, tens. I think that's sort of the 800-pound gorilla in the room is, what do we do? I mean, where do we go? We're moving and we're putting things together and we're creating the best opportunities we can in the short term, but we need to really start to think, and now, about the future. And is the future temporary classrooms or semi-permanent classrooms, or is it going to be new construction that's added to the building? If it's going to be new construction, have we begun to look at where that could possibly fit? Those projects take years, and if we don't start moving now on them, when we need them, we're not going to have them. And, you know, for those of us who lived through some of the temporary classrooms back in the Dark Ages, it's not the optimal thing where kids have to go outside to, you know, a trailer. I really think that we need to, we as a group, need to, you know, assign a task force or something to look at that and look at it now and look at it seriously and plan for it, because if we don't put it in our budget, if not this coming year, next year, then we can't possibly have it for four years out. And if we're going to have 1,350 kids in a building that's built for 1,200, we need to do it now.
So, I appreciate that, and I know that we've looked at the issue of those additive classrooms. In fact, the Capital Long-Term List did project a few years out that we might need those. And so, I think those will continue to be under study. I do also want to assure the board that when we just look at our five-year projections, the addition of the two classrooms that we're speaking about for next year will hold us through that five-year period. So, the study that I think we're all interested in doing during those coming years is really for that second five-year period, which, as all the demographers have stated, is a little less guaranteed in terms of live bodies. The ones we're planning for right now in the short term are already in our school system. They're populated in the elementary schools. So, your point is well-taken, Mr. Gresson. I know that we've got some work ahead.
No, I know you do. I just want you to know that we support you in that work, and we're here to, you know, to do whatever's necessary to make sure that you get the space that you need to educate the kids.
Along that vein, one of the things that has been asked also, when we look at the various programs, such as the art, music, well, the PE, I think the gym was cut back when we did the addition. The cafeteria was cut back when it went through the renovation. The program of music is being expanded and instrumental, and we see the concerts that are just full of so many kids that are excited about music and drama. And do you have any thoughts about how we can keep those programs? We don't want to encroach on those rooms either, if possible.
One of the trends when we start to look closer at the data in the coming five years is this high and low every-other-year cohort pattern that you see in the numbers. So, it's, in some ways, difficult when it comes to staffing because I have to move people around every year, and that creates a certain instability and preparedness. At the same time, there's a hidden silver lining in there in so that the pressures are not equally applied in all four grades simultaneously. So, to the point of staffing and populating art classes and music classes and PE classes, if my fifth grade currently this year is a bit low, my sixth grade, as you know, is the largest cohort in the school system, 370. My fifth grade's about 305. So, next year, I'll be inheriting a larger fifth grade. I'll have to expand my homeroom system, but I'll contract my sixth grade in order to do that. And the same holds true for the number of art sections that I have to have at each grade, PE sections, music sections. So, sort of with the accordion effect, I can handle the every-other bulge pattern that we're seeing in the next five to six years. Again, after that, you know, I think we'll be back at the board level, looking at recommendations for long-term. But in the near term, which in the life of a school is usually three to five years, you know, I'm optimistic, even though we continue to be pinched, I don't see that we're going to be sacrificing the quality of our innovation nor not being able to meet our mandates.
Gene?
To switch subjects a little bit, but not away from enrollment and staffing, I'm looking at the East versus South versus West FTEs, and I noticed that, and this is not to challenge, but to understand, that East has 19 more students than South and 2.5 FTEs more. Likewise, they have 54 more students than West, but 4.9 FTEs. So, they have a lot more FTEs per student than the other two schools, and maybe someone could just give us some insight into what's going on at the East. That requires, again, I'm not challenging why there are so many. I just want to understand what's different there.
The comparison of FTEs at East and South?
Yes. East has more FTEs per student.
Yeah, my guess is, just kind of, and I could call over Chris, at East, it could be the way that the sections fall, the break in the sections. Is that probably it?
It's that and also special area teachers.
And special area teachers.
Special...
Special area teachers.
Could you step up and use a microphone? Thank you. Sorry, otherwise it doesn't go onto the... Thank you.
On now? Okay. Part of it is where those new students that we have have landed. We did need to increase our kindergarten sections. We moved up to six sections in fourth grade, and we also had a cohort of four kindergarten sections that, last year, that had grown over the course of the year, so needed to become five sections as first graders. So, we added sections, and then we also, with the increase in students, needed to add special area teachers for PE, art, music, those special area teachers in terms of their hours with students. Because we had more classes, we needed to add FTEs there as well.
All right, thank you.
And if Joanne can speak to, you're actually reduced, and again, about how the sections broke in terms of that?
We were at 28 sections last year. We're at 27 sections this year. That helped us to reduce all of our extra specialists, so we had a .1, .2, or .3 of some of our extra specialists. And being on a rotating schedule, which all three of the elementary schools are, we did not have a need for any additional specialists, other than our full-time specialists, and reduced one classroom teacher also.
So, it's how they break in terms of classes?
Okay. Sherry?
Gary, just another question regarding the NASDAQ projections. And I understand that kind of the difficult one to project is the kindergarten, that input into the system. And what really threw us off this year is having a much higher in-migration and a much higher conversion of births to actual kindergartners. I know originally the enrollment committee was working with the local preschools to try and get better data, and I'm just curious as to if that system is working to give us, you know, better data analysis to help us project better going forward.
So, that's a great question, and Jill has a perfect answer for that because she serves also on the Enrollment and Staffing Committee. And we did collect quite a bit of data around, from the preschools two years ago, and it didn't always really translate into the numbers that we received. So, Jill, talk a little bit about that.
So, we did have an opportunity to collect a lot of that preschool data, and what we've discovered is when you look at where the children are coming from, they come from such a variety of preschools. So, we're able to collect the data from the preschools that exist here in New Canaan, and they're very happy to share that data and collaborate with us. But when you go to look beyond the preschools within New Canaan, you could be talking close to 40 different preschools, some that are in New York, some that are in Ridgefield, some that are in Wilton. And then you have the families that are moving in. So, it was very unpredictable, so we spent a lot of time collecting the data, looking at the data, but we still had unpredictability. So, what we've really found most beneficial was moving to the online process for preregistration and starting early. That helped us. But we are still in that same situation when June and July roll around and we have new families that move into the district. But we have done a much better program now in looking at the class sections come the springtime. We have a much better prediction of where we're going to be. We knew that we were watching both East and West very closely in July. In June, we knew that right around the kindergarten orientation, that we were going back and forth between those sections. And I do believe that so much of that is truly because we've put it online and parents can just click a button, let us know that they're interested, let us know that they're coming to the New Canaan Public Schools. It gives us their name, their address, and then we continue with our communication. Linda Malazi, who is over at, Malazo at the central office, who serves as the register, there are just emails that are generated weekly to the parents until they actually bring in all of their registration paperwork. And we've been talking as an elementary principal group, and we really want to start earlier this year, get the advertisement out into the newspaper in November, and have, encourage families to start coming in. We do a big presentation right at the beginning of January with Meg Domino, and that draws in a large cloud as, a crowd as well. Last year, we had the technology set up, so people that were not preregistered, we just put them right into a tablet, and they just preregistered right there. So, it gave us better numbers than trying to collect all the data from the existing preschools.
And the important piece that the demographer noted was that this past school year, there were, in the last 48 years of looking at birth-to-kindergarten experience, the demographer saw that there was 164 move-ins into our district. We couldn't have predicted that. It's the highest in 48 years. Even last year was only 111. And they're predicting another 162 for next year. So, we think that we're at a peak, particularly in our kindergarten, and we're projected at around the same number. So, you know, we'll see.
Other questions? Allison?
Just want to say, as a town, we have a very good problem, you know? When young families are deciding what town to move into to educate their children, they're choosing New Canaan. And the town should feel very proud because the town's been very generous in terms of investing in our educational system here. And obviously, it's paying off because we are drawing young families, quite a few young families here. Two things, Gary, that I wanted to just talk about quickly. One is, in reading in your summary for us, the memorandum, you talked about projection methodology. And I know this is a public document, and I know you mentioned this is all on our website, but I also think it's important for the public to understand, because I've had several people say to me, "Why are we off every year?" You know? Fire the demographers, hire a new one. You know, there's all kinds of things people want to do, and we've tried all that. And I think it's really important for people to understand, and you stated it well, I think, in this particular paragraph, that we really customize the algorithm that we use for this particular town. And people need to understand that we don't just have, there's not a set, you know, a set of variables out there that people look at, you know, that they look at our town as similarly to how they look at other towns, too. And I thought it was really important that you had mentioned in here that some of the refinements and modifications required that are specific to our school district include new housing construction, immigration, resident New Canaan students not attending the public school system, and outplacements. And again, you've asked Dr. Kennedy to factor in the New Canaan's housing market. And I know how hard you work and your staff and the entire administration. It's been stated year after year after year, how you talk and work with the real estate agents, that you work with the preschools, that you pretty much do everything that you possibly can, and yet, we still tend to be off. But again, I think that's because it's a draw to this town, and it's also to our administration and to the faculty and to the staff. They should be commended that we have this wonderful school district that people are attracted to and are coming in here, and it should make every single property owner in this town smile, you know, from morning to night because it's doing wonderful things for, certainly for our property value. The other thing I want to mention just quickly, too, is our salary line. When we go into the budget season, we're always in the budget season, but when we get to January, the budget season, you know, everybody takes a look at our salary line as they should because that's the largest line item really of our particular budget. And I think, I don't know how many years in a row now, and you can probably give a much more accurate statement than I can, but you reach, I think, the end of the summer, and you have to hire teachers. And I know sometimes there's pressure on the system to say, "Okay, take a look at your current staff, and you're just going to, we're just going to roll that forward." And every year, we say, "We need some flexibility in that line because it's a fluid, you know, it's a fluid system, there's a lot of fluidity to this, and we have to be able to adjust and be flexible." So, I just want to point out that yet again, post-budget, once we set the salary line, we've had to hire how many teachers for this? we've had to hire how many teachers for this, this current school year?
Well, we actually hired two K and one first grade, and we had a few other adjustments in special ed as well. But as you noticed, we're still fairly flat overall.
Yes, you've done a wonderful job with that.
It was not a net increase of that many sections, so we have been pretty thrifty in terms of keeping our enrollment fairly, our staffing fairly consistent. You saw the difference between this year and last year was almost negligible.
Right, no, I think you've done actually a wonderful job, and I think Scott was pointing that out also in terms of budgeting for this. But I think it's important for everyone to understand that there is fluidity to this, and there are last-minute decisions that need to be made, and despite all the hard work, we get surprises pretty consistently.
We get surprises.
Yes, so thank you for adjusting to those surprises.
I had one more question, just about program, that I wanted to come back and ask about SACS. This year, the STEM program has been very popular that was added, and it was something that we looked at on the board, as we were very pleased to be able to be adding that, and I gather there was so much interest in it that the class had to be split into and spread out through the week, instead of having the same number of days that were originally planned. And I think it was something that parents were hoping that in the future would be able to be continued again, and I only mention it, I'm not trying to make you a magician again to make another classroom that we can't do, but it's just to make people mindful of the kinds of things that we would like to be having, I think, as a board and as a population and as parents would like to have. And it's the kind of thing that we may have to be making adjustments on, and so that if we do prepare to do, as Scott suggested, that we look at a plan and see how we can in some way make some improvements, whether or not there'll be additions or what would happen, that we'd all understand that these are the kinds of things that are important to us as, as a board. So another hand go up. Deanna?
I just, actually, Allison mentioned that, that you work with the Realtors, and actually, because of this move-in number that seems to be spiking enrollment at the, what are you doing with the Realtors? Is it that just the demographer working with the Realtors? And maybe what kind of communication maybe goes along with the local Realtors? Because they will have a good handle on what's, what's happening. I mean, I think it probably takes, the lead time is probably a few months when a family's moving into town, and, you know, maybe, maybe we can get maybe a better dialogue with, with local Realtors to, to have a better handle on that number. If you could speak to sort of what, yeah?
Yeah, the, all of the real estate communication has been done by the demographer. He's looking at home sales, he's, in part of his report, he did talk about, you know, that, that work, because he really was taken by the number of move-ins compared to births, particularly for the kindergarten numbers. But that is something he, he, he follows through with, with, with the real estate market.
You know, I would just suggest, maybe, because we have some Realtors who are very active in town government, and they would have a vested interest in keeping us really abreast on what's going on, that we maybe make a more, a local appeal, as opposed to a, just relying on the demographer for that.
And in the past, Deanna, we have worked with the local Realtors, and they have given us numbers as far as the number of houses on the market that are for sale. One of the areas that's been very unpredictable is the rentals. So they're able to give us an estimate of where they are with the rentals, but that seems to be an area that is very difficult to follow. But we have worked closely with them in the past as part of the Enrollment Study Capacity Committee.
I've spoken with a broker who is, does a lot of analytical work with, and it turns out that most of the sales, which you would expect, are in August. So sometimes it's hard for us to plan ahead if they're buying, the primary numbers, largest number of sales are in August, it's hard to plan for September, unfortunately.
When we looked at it initially, and we started talking to the real estate community, we found that that was the least predictable part of it, was that if somebody buys a house in June and moves in, you know, and, or goes to contract in June and closes in July and moves in in August, the work was so long ago done that it didn't really matter, that so much of, of the selling season and closing season was after we already had to have our projections, that it was.
But perhaps a more formal relationship might be helpful to us. I think, I think we're trying to develop a list of ways to be helpful, not to make extra work that won't work, but.
No, thank you, I appreciate it.
But try and find some things. Gene?
I'm gonna switch subjects again and go to the staff utilization report. It's not a question, it's more of a concern. In the staff utilization report, the BOE has sixty-one FTEs, I believe, but if you look at it, a number of those are maintenance, some are tech.
What page? Page?
Page one and two. There aren't any totals there, but, but if you just look at all the, all the FTEs.
For non-certified, got it.
Yeah, well, right. Under BOE, though, but all under Board of Education, non-certified, there are sixty-one, which includes, in fact, administrators, of course, and superintendent is there appropriately, but there's maintenance, there's technical support, there's transportation, which is quite a number of them, and food services. And my concern is that a casual look at this would say, "Hey, that's a lot of people for the BOE, it's huge." In reality, though, the transportation people, and by the way, some of these people are really truly Board of Eds, there are certainly the assistant superintendents, the superintendents, et cetera, some of the secretaries are, but I suspect a number of these people are put there because it's not easy to allocate them to where they really are. They are serving the students. For instance, the two, two food employees are not making dinners or lunches for the Board of Ed, they're doing it for students. The transportation people are not driving around Board of Ed people, they are driving mostly students around.
That's correct.
I suspect the same is true for technical support, custodians, maybe there's a custodian over at the Board of Ed, I don't think so, et cetera. So, and, and my concern is not that these people are not legitimate, they are, but I'm concerned that it may lead to a misunderstanding of how much overhead the Board of Ed has, and we always come back to this business about how we're administratively heavy, and this, while, and can defend this and point this out, it's oftentimes hard to turn a misconception around, once it gets started, it leaves someone with a bad impression. So I would consider looking at possibly redoing this report, not necessarily this year, but certainly in time, to more accurately reflect that these people are not working for the Board of Ed. I mean, all teachers work for the Board of Ed, but they're not doing something for, literally for the Board of Ed, they're doing student services, and I think that would better present the reality, and also better present the reality and also delay or defray some questions which really would be a misunderstanding.
Thank you, Gene.
Thank you, Gene. Are there any other questions or concerns that anybody wants to raise? I think, I think there've been several ideas and suggestions as they've come forth, and as I say, I'm not sure they definitely are under your mantle, but I think there's some that we can definitely be thinking about, and I know you're already looking ahead and trying to plan and working with Bob Willoughby and with everybody in technology and the foreign language, people have been trying to think of in ways, ingenious ways to expand without building, but if we have to do it, as we've said, we may have to do that. So, did you want to say anything to add on, Brian?
Well, I just want to acknowledge Gary and his team for an enormous amount of work putting all of these reports together. I mean, this is such a highly detailed stack of information, with any page that has thirty, forty individual numbers on them, you know it's been checked at least three times, and we've got probably a hundred pages that are, that are that way here. So, you know, he couldn't do it, Gary and his team, they work very closely with the building folks, and I know there's data and information going back and forth, and just, you know, this, it helps us to paint that picture of sort of the current reality of where we are, and, you know, projections as we go forward, and, and that's really what we need in order to be able to accurately plan. You know, this is, it's a jumping off point for our conversations, and as we, we've been waiting, I think, a little bit for this information, so that we can then base the decisions in this year's upcoming budget we'll be developing and, and beyond. And this is, it's an awful lot of material and information, just to acknowledge all the hard and good work that went into it.
Thank you.
Thank you. I just wanted also to thank, in the same vein, the principals who've done a lot of work, thinking and being creative and trying to come up with solutions, and I hope you hear also support from the board, that we're here very much to try to support programs also. So as you reach those points where the walls don't go out any further, know that we're here, and do sympathize, understand, and, and can see, as was pointed out, that the people who are moving here are interested in the schools because of the wonderful jobs that you're doing. So thank you. Now we'll move on to our next. We have a exciting presentation, the New Canaan High School Program Report. Dr. Laduke, welcome to the microphone, it's nice to have you here.
While Dr. Laduke is getting set up, I will just give you a quick summary of what she'll be presenting this evening. So this evening, she'll be talking about District Goal Number One, Objective Number Two, which is all students will meet New Canaan High School graduation standards, which include the knowledge and skills to succeed in a complex global society. There will be three areas of focus for her presentation this evening. The first will be on the opportunities for and participation in the advanced studies. The second area will be on the impact of scheduling to support and extend learning, and the third area will be a brief update on our student internship program. She will be returning in early spring to give us an update on the New Canaan High School graduation standards. We are still waiting for information from the state of Connecticut to guide us, and so it will be a great opportunity for her to give another quick update on these three areas and the progress that we're making toward them. For all of you that are watching in public, I did want to let you know that we did post the presentation onto the district website, so you'll have the opportunity to follow along while Dr. Laduke is presenting. So thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. It's been an exciting night already, and I hope I can keep it just as much fun as we move along. As Dr. Corenti said, we're here to talk about District Goal One and particularly Objective Two, and we have three particular points of focus. So I'd like to start out with some discussion on the report of progress on continuing to expand pathways and opportunities for and participation in advanced studies. And for the last several years, we've been increasing our participation in AP courses. In ten-eleven, eleven-twelve, and twelve-thirteen, we offered the courses that are listed there, the seventeen courses that are listed there. We'll have some numbers about that in a few slides down, but we held steady for those years, ten-eleven, eleven-twelve, and twelve-thirteen, at seventeen AP courses that were offered. In two thousand thirteen, two thousand fourteen, we added four courses, three of which were in the social studies area, and we, we also added AP environmental science. This year, we've added Physics One and Psychology. So we're up now to twenty-three advanced placement courses that we have made available to students at New Canaan High School. Our participation has increased steadily. It's a little hard to tell from the raw numbers, because the enrollment goes up and down over that time, but the total enrollment in AP classes, as you can see, has increased up to a current enrollment of eight hundred and twenty-five this year. The total number of AP tests taken last year was six hundred and ninety-four. What's interesting about that is that only represents three hundred and eighteen different testers. So it averages about two-point-something AP classes that students take. Percent of the students enrolled in AP who tested runs in the mid-nineties, some years as high as ninety, almost ninety-eight percent. We are slowly increasing the percent of students in grades ten through twelve who took AP tests, from twenty-seven point nine in two thousand eleven up to thirty-four point six, and we hope that percentage will again increase this year with the addition of the two extra One of the questions that has come up over time is how do students move from course to course within the time they're here in school? And this page is from the Program of Studies, and it can be used by parents and students when planning progression through, for instance, the mathematics sequence. We have similar pages like this in the Program of Studies for all subjects, but I wanted to show you tonight that what students can do with their parents when they're either here at the school already or in the eighth grade, is that they can use this information to help plan how they can move through their math course selection, depending on where they start in their math course, course selection. So if you'll, give me just a second, I'm gonna try to bring the plotter up. They tell me this will work, and we tried it earlier. Here it comes. So let's say you're a student in the eighth grade, and you're planning to take Algebra One when you come to the high. You're not seeing that. I'm seeing it. What am I doing wrong here, Harrison? Oh, it's not me, I'm very glad. Thank you. So this course plotter allows the parent who is at home with their child, or even the child who's exploring, to take a look at what math class they may be expected to go to, or what class they'd like to take, and it allows them to see what their options are as they move through the school. So we can pick somebody, the most common, well, that's, I was gonna say, the most common class for students to come in is Algebra One M3, but it's not, but that's one we'll pick, just to see what happens. So now there'll be an explanation, and it tells them why they were probably placed in that class, and the pacing of that course, and the details about that course, what the course will involve. I wish I could make that little box go away on the bottom. Maybe I can. And it gives, it gives an explanation of what's to come, and then when they work their way down, it will tell them where else they can, what would happen in the next class in And so then they can look and see, "Well, after I leave Algebra M3, I can go to geometry, or I can take both geometry and Algebra Two, and I can take them at the M3 or the M4 level, and we certainly hope that we don't have to have them take the M2 level." But there's even a prompt there to say, "If your test and quiz average falls below eighty, you probably should be thinking about moving to the less rigorous course." So that's the process that's in place, and so students could plot that out from eighth grade right through their whole high school career, or as they're moving through, examine what their options are grade to grade. And so one of the things that has been of concern, I think, is that people perhaps don't know what their options are, or how they can plot their way through school, and each department has a Program of Studies entry like this that helps students, they're not all interactive, the interactive ones certainly are the more helpful, but there are the most common methods. And one of the things I'd like to stress is that as you look through those, they show very clearly that regardless of where a student enters into any one of those programs coming in in ninth grade, what level that is, there is a path that will take them to the most rigorous level. And I think there's some misunderstanding that if a student happens to enter, for instance, the science department at the earth science level, there is not an option for that student to take an AP class as a senior in the science area, and that's a misunderstanding, I think, on a lot of parts for people. So it's important for them to know that this is not, you come in at a certain place, then you have to stay at a certain place. The plan is that we provide kids with the skills and strengths they need so they can move through the program at the level at which they would feel most comfortable in being successful. Harrison, can you get me out? So one of the things I thought it would be interesting for us to take a look at is if we took the current class of two thousand fifteen, we can see that there are a hundred and eighty-six of those students, or sixty point eight of the class, sixty point eight percent of the class who have taken one or more AP classes. In addition, there's another ten point eight percent, or thirty-three students, who have taken honors level classes and no AP classes. And so the question that faces us is how do we encourage the eleven percent of students who have already tried a rigorous honors level class to step forward and say, "I'd like to pursue an advanced placement class or a college level class in an area where I have an interest." How can we get those students to? How can we get those students to understand that they're prepared and they're capable of doing that? And then we have approximately 29 percent of our students who have not explored that higher-level, more rigorous program, and what do we need to do to help them have the confidence to do that? So that's what we're going to look at next. So some of the things we'll be adding is an AP Computer Science in the fall of 2015. We think that that will bring some interest to students. We have them currently taking the introductory course to that now, and perhaps for students who don't feel that they're necessarily interested in the AP or the college-level experience in some of their other classes, may have that spark in the computer science area. So we'll be offering that in the fall of 2015. We will continue with the current early college experience that we have now. We have two classes that we offer through the UConn Early College Experience. One is a Family and Consumer Science class, and the other one, students in AP Spanish can also elect the Early College Experience program through UConn. We're looking to expand the number of courses that we can offer through there that gives students another opportunity to take an advanced-level, college-level class. We've also begun a discussion with Norwalk Community College. We've had two meetings with them so far to see about articulating some courses that we have here at school that would meet the requirements of the Norwalk Community College in terms of their college experience, and we could then encourage our students to explore college-level work as the Early College Experience with UConn does through the Norwalk Community College. And we are also exploring the addition of Advanced Placement English Language. It is a goal of the most recent Commissioner of the state of Connecticut that every student who graduates from high school has a college-level experience while they're in high school. And our goal is to get the other 29 percent of our students who have not yet gone that road yet to try and get them to consider making that, that commitment to their education to have a college-level experience before they graduate. Another question that's come up is how does the course selection process currently work? And currently, we use a system that is based in teacher recommendation with the opportunity for students to file appeals if the teacher recommendation is not what they believe they should take in the next year. So currently, in February, current teachers make a course recommendation. If the students are grade-eight students, in some subject areas, they also take an assessment after school if they'd like to be considered for an honors-level class. The student then meets with his or her counselor. The student elects the recommended class or files an appeal. And the appeal is filed online and consists of a series of questions the student answers regarding his or her rationale for the appeal. The department chair and department members review the written appeals and relevant data points. Those data points are standardized or benchmark scores, past performance, teacher's recommendation, and the student rationale. And then the decision is made by the appeal committee communicated to the student and parent, and then if the student and/or parent would like to meet with the department chair for an explanation or a discussion, that's always an option. One of the things that happens is that the final section numbers are entirely dependent upon the student choices when we get through the appeal process. And so that determination doesn't come until well after the process has happened. I want to make sure that it's clear that we don't set the number of sections, and then students have to be sort of fit into those sections. We find out what it is that will meet the students' needs and determine the sections from then. A question we should ask is, how comfortable are our middle school counselors in discussing the possible sequence of courses in the various departments? That may have some effect on what courses teachers recommend in the middle school and counselors encourage students to take in the middle school. It's also important to note that the sequence is flexible and that students don't be, have to be afraid to enter the particular course of study in a certain place in the ninth grade and feel that they're stuck there and they can't move up or down as their needs require. One of the things I thought you might find pertinent is that for this particular year in the eighth grade, we had 83 students appeal their placement in 120 courses. Of those students, 47.5 percent of those appeals were granted. In the high school, 165 students appealed 218 course placements, and 63.3 percent of those were granted. And in most cases, actually, I would say in all cases, after the department chairs met with the various parents and children to discuss the data points that were taken into consideration, all parents agreed with the placement, to the best of our knowledge, that students had. So we were at least confident that what we're doing is meeting, meeting the needs of students in many ways. One of the things we're looking at is opportunities for equal access. One of the things we absolutely do not want to do is to have a program in place or a system in place that prevents students from reaching their highest potential. And so we don't want to be setting up a structure that works without reconsidering whether we have to reevaluate and adjust that system to better meet the needs of the students. So this year, the whole school learning goal in the high school, which is our TEPEL goal, one of the four parts of our TEPEL system, is to continue the process of aligning grading rationales and assessments through the collaborative efforts of our professional learning communities. And what this involves is the analysis of the instruction, skills, and content in both honors-level and non-honors-level courses in all departments. With that done, then departments can review the prerequisites that they have set for courses and the recommended course sequence. They can review how they make recommendations for students and what they use for data points for that, and they can analyze the student performance data for students who have moved levels. And that's one of the things that we're in the midst of right now. Many of the numbers that you have were put together by Mr. Gallo, and he does a great job sorting data for us. And one of the data investigations he's doing for us is he's looking at students who have appealed their teacher-recommended placements and placed to a higher-level class, and we're analyzing how successful those students are, and do they demonstrate that they are meeting the expectations of those courses to the same degree of students who are recommended for those courses by their teachers. And we should have some information about that, at least preliminary information, after the first semester exams, because that first real summative examination should give us a sense of how those appeal, those students who've entered on appeal have done. There are essentially four ways to proceed with course assignment. One is based solely on teacher recommendation. One would have teacher recommendations followed by appeals. One would involve a process called overrides, and then there would be what's called open enrollment. What we're trying to figure out is what is the best method for us to, to use with our students. We currently use the system of recommendation with appeals. So we're in the process of collecting data regarding enrollment procedures used in other schools in our DURG. If they've changed their procedures, have they found that those procedures have resulted in an increase in participation in advanced-level classes? And one of the things that's particularly important is if students, if they have increased their level in advanced, their participation, excuse me, in advanced-level classes, how do they handle requests for change of course levels after the semester is underway? That's a particularly important thing for us to consider when we're making sections, because once we've set the sections, if students would like to then withdraw from the section they've gone into, will we have a place to put them? So those are two very big questions that we're asking about the other school, asking the other schools in our DURG, to see if we can get some input about other ways that we can possibly consider having students be recommended for courses. We also have a faculty committee that's meeting in regards to the NEAS-SNC recommendation to have us consider having a heterogeneous course in a core-level course. And we're exploring options that committee has been meeting now for about 13 months, and we hope we'll have a recommendation by the end of the year because we have to answer that recommendation in the two-year report. So that's one of the other things that's under consideration. The purpose of that would be to make sure that we had a course where fundamental and essential skills were taught to every single student that took that course, regardless of whether it was an honors or, rather, whether it was an honors curriculum or a non-honors curriculum, it would be the same for all students. And that is a current recommendation of the New England Association. So now that we've looked at opportunities for advanced learning, the third bullet in the, in the district goal is to examine the impact of scheduling on student opportunities and learning outcomes, and to develop a plan to update schedules to support and extend learning across the district. We have a faculty committee that is addressing just that. The NEAS study asked us to take a look at time and how we could use time in a more efficient and effective way. And they begun that process by doing a literature review of time allocation in the schools. They've explored schedules used in other DURG A and DURG B schools. They've been visiting schools with other schedules in place, and they've been analyzing the data that they've collected during that time through the process so that they can, again, make a recommendation about considering our schedule in light of other possible schedules. The advantages of our current eight-period drop-one rotating schedule, the class meets at different times throughout the rotation, most teachers and kids really like that because they don't see their teacher, and the teacher don't, doesn't see the kids at the same time each day, and so if somebody's not a morning person, they don't have to have that class first period every morning. So that's an advantage that everybody sees with this schedule. It allows for 48 minutes rather than 41-minute classes if no classes are dropped, and still gives the opportunity of eight periods. Most classes meet on consecutive days, and science classes have an additional 96 minutes per rotation. Some of the challenges of the current schedule, there are schedule constrictions when we have part-time staff. Sharing staff between schools is a real challenge. 48-minute class periods present instructional challenges in some courses like PE, culinary work, sculpture, those kinds of things where you just get into what you're doing and the bell rings. Frequent instructional changes throughout the day, overall, the fast pace of the day with seven passing periods, we lose 35 minutes to walking around the building, and the overlapping of science classes into two periods of the rotation limits students' access to additional choices. We've introduced some strategies for addressing scheduling limitations. This year, we have two students who are participating in a pilot program for online learning through the virtual high school. Both of those students did that because of severe restrictions in their own course selections, and they weren't able to get some singleton classes that existed out there. So these both, these pilots are both in the language area. What we're considering and looking at the virtual high school is the rigor of the course, the flexibility, the comprehensiveness of the offerings in case we wanted to expand the program, and of course, the cost factor. We also have a couple of people who are working with Dr. Miller to explore other online options to see if we can offer online learning through another venue other than the virtual high school. We're reviewing the current credit distributions. We can't get too far on that because the state may be realigning their credit distributions, but we're looking at what we have in place in relation to what the state currently requires to see if there's any adjustment that we should make there. And so that's what's going under, that's underway in discussion regarding scheduling. In regards to the internship program, you can see that we've nearly exploded the possibilities beyond expectation. We have gone from 12 in the first year to 72 students participating, and you can see that we started out with the number of mentors and work sites one-to-one, and we've now had it. So we have so many students that we have multiple students at some sites, and many of us have multiple mentees. So there's a lot of demand for the internship program. It's been shown to be not only enjoyed by the students, but it seems to be a very, very valuable contribution to the school. So one of the things that we have to think about is with the number of participants and mentors going up so much, will we be able to do it with the current system that we have in place, or will we have to look at staffing requirements and funding for this program to continue to meet the anticipated demand? So there you go, lots of information in a short time. It's, I think, just a thumbnail sketch of a very, very complex district goal, and I'm happy to answer any questions that you have, or if I don't have the answers, collect that information for you and bring it back to you.
That was very comprehensive, thank you. Any questions? Scott?
Lots of information, lots of really good, positive information. And information that I think we need to do a better job of getting out into the community because these are questions and challenges that we hear all the time. I want to focus for a minute, if we can, on the advanced placement participation. And how, you know, you asked, I think appropriately, what do we do to get more of the kids involved in trying to experience a college-level course while they're in high school? And it seems to me, if you just look at it, you know, very simply, the more courses we add, the more participation we get. You know, if, if we had, in 2011 to 2013, you know, we added 35 students into the programs without really adding any, any offerings, but the minute we started to add offerings, we jumped 111 the next year and 88 the year after that. So the more we offer, simplistically, I agree, the more we offer, you know, if, if we offer, they will come. So what are the barriers to offering more and more diverse courses?
Well, I think one of the barriers is that every, almost every AP class, physics not included, and a couple of social studies are generally singletons in order to get enough, that there are a limited number of people who are in the place academically to go to those areas. And after a while, because we have so many students who, for lack of a better term, double-dip or triple-dip or quadruple-dip, we get to a place where those students who are taking multiple classes can't take anymore, nor should they. And we get to a place where many of those are singleton classes, and to arrange the schedule in a way that the singleton classes fall in places where students can take them becomes a challenge. But I think more importantly is that we have a certain segment of our population that doesn't seem to be able, willing to step to the edge of the precipice and say, I'm ready to take a college-level course. I believe them when they tell me I'm ready. We have a certain percentage of the population that I think we need to do a better job convincing that they're capable, provided it's in an area where they're interested and they're willing to do the work that a college-level course requires. And that may be something that we have to do in, I'm sure it's what we have to do in multiple ways. We have to talk to our teachers more about helping students understand they have the skills in certain areas. We have to instill in our students the value, I think, of taking a college-level course and seeing, are they in fact ready to do this? Because when the next year comes, if they happen to be seniors, they will be doing it. And I, I think there's philosophical implications here, and there is that encouraging of students to move to the more rigorous program, to take on that honors-level challenge, to say, oh, I'm successful in honors, I can be successful in this college-level class.
So does that make the question, how many kids- So does that beg the question, how many kids are recommended for an AP course that choose not to take it? Is that a big, is that a large number? Are we not recommending enough or are we not preparing them early enough? If we don't recommend them, then, and they're not, you know, predisposed to it, they're not going to challenge the recommendation. So are we effectively recommending enough?
I think that we maybe are not recommending enough and the reason why I say that is because I think that we have a tendency not, not to say to a student who is successful at a particular level but not exceptionally successful at a particular level, I think we have a tendency not to say, "Gee, don't you think you want to take the next, the next step that you need to take?" I think that's done out of perhaps love. I think people sometimes don't want to challenge a student that is making good progress in a particular level and they don't want to push them to a place where perhaps the number might be, might not look as good, but the performance would in fact, be increased. And so there's a little bit of that, what will this look like on my transcript worry as well. If they're scoring an 86 or an 87 or an 88 in a honors-level class or a regular class, maybe they'll get a 78 or an 82. And some, some people are uncomfortable with the number even though the learning and the overall impact might be greater with the 78 or the 82. And I think that's a little bit of a sell for us because the transcript.
Is there also a grade multiplicative factor for AP courses?
There is for the GPA, but the grade still shows up, that number still is whatever that number is. And so some people are frightened by a number that doesn't start with an eight or a nine. And so that's probably some marketing and some education that we need to do. I happen to be, science person that I am, a believer that everybody should be taking chemistry and maybe someone will get a 77, but a 77 in chemistry is way better than no chemistry, just my own bias.
I agree.
Yes, Teddy?
I was just wondering, we, you know, we have the very terrific Project Lead the Way series of courses and I'm not seeing any AP classes that, somebody who really likes that, where they could get to it. I mean, we're thinking, we're adding computer sciences.
The new computer science is an outgrowth of Project Lead the Way. I believe that is the only course that would be available in the AP area that would directly follow from Project Lead the Way.
There aren't any kind of engineering classes or anything like that?
There are not at this point that are tested in that way. In that area, we are at the mercy of Princeton and the advanced placement, the advanced placement program. They don't happen to create that. Although I, I should say that I believe in some of the more advanced Project Lead the Way courses, they do get some college credit for those. So those really would count as advanced placement or advanced work areas, but they don't get AP testing that way. So there are a couple of those that students take if they've been in Project Lead the Way for the sequence, that they do earn some college credit for that.
I just wonder then whether or not there would be honors classes or something that we could add in that area, just to throw out there. I just have anecdotally heard an awful lot of stories about, you know, students coming, not necessarily New Canaan High School students, but some New Canaan High School students going into engineering programs and feeling like they didn't necessarily have the background that some other students from other high schools had. I don't know if it was the computer sciences or whatever, but I thought it was an area that we might want to look at.
When I, I heard a similar thing last year and it was around the computer science specifically, which did prompt us to bring in the computer science course this year. The, which is, it is a Project Lead the Way computer science course that, so it does work in that sequence. And then the, adding the AP computer science next year is to, for those students that enjoy that work and want to continue to go. So that was a direct, sort of, result of that, some of those conversations around course offerings versus other schools that did have the computer science.
And I just heard some anecdotal stories about students going into engineering from New Canaan and other places and it being such a jolt that some of them leave immediately. And so anyhow, it occurred to me that we should look at, at the high school level, I mean, maybe the problem's at college, I don't know, but you know, I just thought maybe we should also look at the high school level to see if students who are interested in that, and there are increasing numbers of students interested in engineering, you know, if there was something that we could do.
Yeah, I mean, our current engineering offering, there's an opportunity to take a test at the end for college credit that's recognized by a number of colleges around, you know, that, it's not nationally, but a, but a number of the, so if you go through the engineering and you take the test and you score a certain proficiency, you get college credit for it. But, so why is that not automatically a designated AP?
That's, it's, that's done because the program Project Lead the Way is from the University of New Haven and so they, they articulate it and they're the ones who offer that credit where AP is run all through the College Board separately.
Okay, Deanna?
I'd just want to add to that, and I think that for engineering, though, a lot of emphasis is really with their math, too, because that's a core, like, so we get the math, so if they get up to multivariable calculus and have taken the AP calculus, like, that's where they have to go to. And I think the sequencing of the math kind of helps to show that you have to get to the top level if you're really thinking of being engineering because that's what the preparedness that most of the other students are getting from the other high schools.
Could be.
Certainly, we would encourage anybody that thought they wanted to be an engineer to plot out their plan to have gone through calculus. It would be important for them, even though at most schools of engineering, they are required to retake their calculus. I don't know if you're aware that that's a requirement in most schools of engineering, you retake calculus in their program because they have a certain bent that they would like it to take. We certainly would encourage anybody who's thinking, and hopefully, they're thinking ahead if they want to go into that area, that calculus is a place for them to end up.
Okay, Deanna had her hand up for a while there. We'll get, we'll get to everybody.
I actually had two questions and a, and a comment. In your honors and AP participation, have you looked at the distribution of boys and girls? I mean, and is it fairly equal? Is it, is it skewed? I mean, and if you haven't?
It is fairly equal. It is slanted a little bit towards the women everywhere.
So, I mean, have you, because I've read the same literature, that it's sort of a national problem actually now that, you know, sort of, we're, we're skewing towards women more than men and, you know, sort of, have we thought, talked about how we get those boys back engaged in taking sort of, you know, more rigorous coursework and, and, you know, I mean, has it been discussed at the, at the high school level?
I would say we haven't had a formal discussion, but I do think that one of the things that we have to take a look at is how do we encourage people at different levels of maturity? And that, that is regardless of their gender. And so students who are more mature and are looking more towards their long-term goals necessarily are planning out a more rigorous program very often. And those students who are less mature as ninth graders, whether male or female, sometimes don't see the light at the end of the tunnel or where it is they're heading yet. And so I think that absolutely is something that we need to look at, is how do we help students envision where they want to be at the end of four years if they don't happen to know that at the, at the start of ninth grade? And I think that's a challenge for all of us parents, because the other thing we don't want to do is we don't want to convince children that they have to have their mind made up about everything they want to do and where they're going when they're only in the ninth grade. So it's a very fine balance between stress and, and preparedness and I think, I'm hoping the, the plans that we're required to do by the state may inspire that somewhat. Another thing that we've talked about is doing a better job at talking to students about what they need for certain careers. I think that teachers, we've talked about this a great deal in the science department, that students just don't know what they need to know if they want to go on in a certain area. I would think that other departments have had those same discussions. And so we need to do a better job, I think, in helping students see what the requirements are for careers so that they sort of say, "Well, maybe I really don't want to do that, but if I want to be this, I need to plan ahead." And we need to do a better job of that, I think.
Okay. And then the, the last question is, and one comment, is, could you be a little more specific about this NEASK recommendation and the, what a heterogeneous course in a core level?
I had the same question.
Sure. When you look at our course of study, our program of study, it's pretty clear that we offer almost every course at an honors level and a non-honors level. And so the theory behind this and the impetus of the New England Association is that when we begin to subdivide students into honors and non-honors, we maybe are separating students in a way, instructionally, in terms of skills and content in a way that may not be entirely necessary. I worked in a school where the principal was very interested in the, the distribution of reading skills among honors and non-honors students. And so all of the students were given a read and, reading test and the reading test was given for a completely different reason. But when the reading was analyzed, it was incredibly clear that it didn't matter what level class the students were in, the range of the reading distribution was the same. So we sometimes place people where they think they should be or where we think they should be. And so the New England Association is encouraging us to consider having a course, at least one course, in a core-level area that has no leveling so that the students are mixed together at random, all exposed to the same skills and content. Branford High School has that for their whole ninth grade. They've made a commitment to not dividing kids up until 10th grade. There's a school of thought with a great deal of literature behind it that says that we'll find that more students will be honors-level students if they start out in the same place with the same rigorous curriculum. So New England Association is encouraging us to consider that.
Okay. And then just one comment is something you need to add to your advantages of the current?
Okay.
And it, and it filters into some other discussions, but having two high school students currently, the first-period sleep-in is...
Oh, there you go. I'll remember that. Those people who have a free period somewhere in their schedule can sleep in every other day or every fourth day or something, yeah. That is an advantage unless you're, unless you're the teacher.
Right.
Or, or the administration, because we're not sleeping in.
Chad, you had your hand up.
Oh, I did. So I thank you so much for this because this makes things so much clearer for me. I'm, I'm a new freshman this year and I have to say, knowing about this course platter and all of that, I had no idea about all this stuff and my husband clearly was the one that attended the meeting and, like, I don't know if it was talked about, but I never even knew about it. And I think with our new website, I think this will be able to be portrayed so much easier to the parents. Again, I feel like we do a really great job transitioning, like, our fourth graders to the fifth grade and, you know, they did a great job, I think, also at the eighth grade, our new incoming freshman parent meeting at SACS. I was, you know, it would be so great to hear this stuff at that because, again, I had no idea and when you come here, it's a little, I mean, again, new parent here, it's a little daunting and there's so many people here and, you know, so it would be great maybe to hear a little bit more about this so that parents can take the time to, to know about this class platter and to know about the, you know, the testing that comes up, because a lot of parents, you know, the kids are like, "Yeah, I'm not going to do that." And then the, you know, the parents, you get memos home, but you really don't understand the, you know, the ramifications of not taking the test if you think your kids might want to do it later. And so I think that would be a great time maybe to expand on this because it's really great. And my other question is on the advanced placement participation and this is probably a really obvious, but can you just distinguish what, what percent enrolled in AP who tested and the percent of students 10, 12 that took the AP test? Like, what, can you just expand on that?
So it is our assumption that when a student enrolls in an AP class, they are planning to take the exam, but every year when those exams roll around, a student doesn't show up or when it comes time for them to sign up to take their tests, they don't think they've done well enough so they don't think they want to sit for the test. We really do try to encourage every student that signs up for an AP class to take the test because quite honestly, if they've done the work in that class, they're going to be very successful. Our scores do come back, they're well-prepared and some of them just are maybe not confident enough to step into the arena. And so it's a small number of students in each class and it goes up and down, but some of them just don't feel that they're prepared, they're confident, they don't think they worked hard enough, whatever their own personal reason is, and so they elect not to take the test. They do, however, not get the honors GPA bump if they elect not to take the test, but they've been in the section and, again, we go back to that whole idea of once we, once we, a student elects to take a class and we commit to a section, it's our expectation that they'll engage in that section and, and that course. And so that's sort of the trade-off of the whole budget situation and, and the FTEs and everything is balancing who's going to take classes and stay there and see it through and who might decide not to see it, stay it through. And so this is a very delicate thing in terms of encouraging students to do something and then you have to have a plan if they decide they don't want to stay.
And does this, this number, this low number, does that, is that what affects some of the high school rankings that we've heard about and things like that?
Depending on the, I think you're talking about the US News and World Report ranking, that...
Do you want me to answer that?
Why don't you do that, Dr. Ledge? Because you and I have, have gone around this bush a lot.
Yeah, I've had so many questions, too, and I just, I would...
No, absolutely. The, the percent enrolled who took AP were the students who were in the, in an AP class and who actually took the test. The percent of students 10 through 12 who took an AP test, that is based on the whole number, that 920 number, that's a few columns up, the total number of students in grades nine through 10. When they talk about the, this ranking system, the US News and World Report, what they're looking at is percentage of, of students in the graduating senior class who've taken one or more AP tests during their four years of high school. So that's a number that I think, did I see a 60-some, a 60-something percent, I think, in the class of 2015? That's the number that's used specifically for that ranking system. And the way they do it, that number is worth 75% or so of the overall ranking and then the performance of those students on that test is that other 25% of that. That's a number because it's, it's a unique number of students in the graduating class who've taken, who've taken the test. The, so as we've been adding classes, you know, we've had many more students in the seats, but overall, students being exposed to one or more AP tests has just sort of nudged up each year, you know, from year to year. When you, that's the number of different students testing line where in 2013, it was 316 and 2014, it was 318 as it goes. So the 60% last year is above where it was before that, so it has been trending upward as we've been adding classes and, and working on this. But that's, that's the specific number that they look at.
Is there still a fee for taking the AP test?
There is.
And so I assume that there's a way that students who may not have that money can easily secure that money?
Absolutely.
Absolutely.
Can I just have one more quick question? Sorry. But I hear mixed reports from different parents regarding, you know, the GPA, you know, freshman year GPA, AAA, it's got to be an A, you know, and then, you know, you have people that are hesitant to get into these AP classes, like you were saying before, they're, they're scared to take that challenge, take that, you know, risk because they're afraid if they get a B, then, you know, X school is going to say that they don't have an A. Like, what are your, what do you see in the colleges that, you know, these kids go to? Is that, I mean, how does that work?
It's my personal experience that a strong, rigorous program where a student has shown his or her ability to be successful in challenging courses is far more important than one of those four GPA numbers that sits in the corner of the, of the transcript. On the other hand, if somebody's plan is to go to Oxford, then they might have to worry a lot about their GPA because there's lots and lots of people who would like to go to Oxford and only a few people get to go and so your GPA may be incredibly important in a very, very competitive situation, but a rigorous program... But a rigorous program, I think, is your best bet and doing the best you can in a rigorous program. And so, I worry about students and parents who maybe avoid a challenge because they're worried about the GPA when the real problem might be that the program wasn't challenging enough. So, I think that's, counselors certainly are far more better, far better able to answer the nuances of that for College A and College B and College C than I am. That's their area of expertise. But I do think we walk a fine line worrying about GPA and rigor of program and what kids should take and they shouldn't take. And a lot, I would say that the counselors have done all that research, they know which colleges worry more about GPA, which ones worry more about whether a particular course is on your transcript. And so, I think parents and students need to take advantage of the expertise that those counselors have, because they do lots and lots and lots of work to get that information college by college by college.
Thank you.
Again, Dr. Ljajic, this is fabulous information. It's just so much information. I've got a couple of different questions and comments. One of them, just for clarification, you explained the course selection process that, what occurs at eighth grade. So, if you're looking at this course plotter with the math course sequence, for example, if someone started off and they were in the M2 Algebra I, but they decided they wanted to challenge themselves because they want to get to multi-variable at the end of the year, can they do the same process then within those high school years or is it a different process?
No, it's exactly the same process. And one of the things that I would say is that it's really important that the student and the parents talk to the counselor about where they want to be at the end, because the options and the pathways are, while not infinite, they're many, many, many. And so, while there may be some pathway that doesn't seem very common, you know, your neighbor's never done it or your son didn't go that route, there may be a way to get from wherever the student is to where the student wants to go with a discussion of what's the path that you can take to get there. And I think that's true in every course area and you can't just presuppose that what the majority of students do will meet your need and that's why the counselors have this conversation with the students.
That's great. And then I understand too that over the summer, you do, you know, to encourage students who have gone through the appeal process to be ready for those AP classes, there's a summer AP course study or something?
Well, what we've, we've changed that from an AP course of study now to a development of essential skills for success in rigorous instruction. So, you don't have to be signing up for an AP class. What this is, is to have you fill in any instructional gaps you may have in some skills in particular areas and it's for students at any level who want to improve their ability to be successful in school. No longer restricted to students who are signed up for AP classes.
And have you seen any trends with that? I mean, do our kids then going through that? I'm not sure if there's any kind of data or anything or if you're looking at, you know, does that work or, again, looking towards trying to get more kids to take those higher, more challenging courses, if that is a method that's working or not?
Well, Mrs. Rivera, who, you know, set up that program this summer, we had quite a demand for it and we're in the process of taking those names of students that took those classes and collecting some data about that. Of course, we're waiting for those first summative exams to come to see how they do on their first exam session. So, we're hoping, the demand was very high for that and we had parents that didn't send their information in by the deadline and so, when they wanted to come, we were filled. And so, we're hoping that we'll be able to meet the needs of even more next year.
Great. And then, I just want to say, commend you for looking at, you know, the schedules and what the other DURG school members are doing and looking to see, you know, if we are maximizing, because it is difficult, there's no one solution that works. And then, just one other comment about the senior internship program. You know, it's grown by leaps and bounds and I know I have students who have gone through the program have said that it is one of the highlights of their high school year and I think it gives them really real-world experience. So, if there are resources that need to be, you know, to expand that program, I think it's a very big component to what we've added to just our regular in-classroom curriculum to have that, you know, real-world experience before they leave the high school.
Well, it is a very popular program and Mrs. Carroll will be sending the word out. I think she does that early December and she'll get the number of students who are interested, but by and large, it's been an incredibly wonderful experience for students and the community at large. And so, I think it just is spreading by word of mouth and almost nobody wants to miss that opportunity.
I would add something that I happened to overhear. Somebody can, trying to convince somebody else to be sure and sign up for this because of the initiative that our students had shown when they were interns. When they go on the job, they don't just sit there, they really get right into the work and they're hard workers. So, it's, a little advertisement for anybody that's interested out there and maybe watching us on television that we could use some more businesses or opportunities for our students to be able to do the internship. Scott?
Yeah, I'd like to really second that. I mean, we almost sort of glanced over that part of your presentation. My son did one this past year, actually with Sherry's husband's company, and it was a tremendous experience for him. And if not unique, really rare that a, you know, a public school offers this kind of hands-on experience to kids in the real world where they're working with real corporations and, and it's a, as far as a matrization process, I don't think it can be equaled. There are a lot of kids who say, "Well, I don't want to give up the last, you know, sort of three weeks or six weeks or whatever it is of my senior year." But for those who do, I think it's, it's, it's an unequaled experience.
Allison?
I just want to say thank you for taking on these initiatives and I'm sure it was a conscious decision to take on scheduling and advanced placement at the same time, because obviously, in terms of our curriculum and our programming, we're not going to be able to become more creative or more flexible in our offerings unless we become more creative and more flexible in our scheduling. And I appreciate you looking at best practices, as was mentioned earlier. And one of the things I want to mention too is you mentioned the analysis that Mr. Gallo is doing and I think that's fabulous that we're looking at both procedure and we're looking at the numbers and in terms of the results of some of the kids who've appealed. Because the question I think Scott had asked earlier was, are we capturing, you know, the right number of students? Are we capturing the right students? And I know there's a lot of pressure on the parent end that a lot of parents want their kids to take AP courses, but not every child is meant to take an AP course in high school. It's my personal opinion, which is why I'm glad that we offer honors classes also, because I think some kids are ready to take the honors courses, but maybe not ready to take the, to take the AP classes. So, I think it'll be really interesting to see for that percentage, I think you mentioned a little under 50% for the eighth graders, a little over 60% for the, for the older kids who are successful in their appeals, it'll be really interesting to see where they came out in the end. So, did we miss them? You know, in fact, did we miss them in the process? Do we need to adjust our process? Or in fact, were we on target and maybe these kids, this wasn't optimal for them to take these classes? So, I think that'll be really, really interesting to see. Hopefully also, we're looking in terms of, I know we've, we've been talking about kind of the advanced education, but hopefully we're looking at our curriculum, I know we always do, our curriculum as a whole. You know, I have a college senior right now who's just starting to look for jobs. I have three kids graduating in the last two years, so I'm familiar with the job market. And it's very interesting to see them coming out, because a lot of these kids, particularly my senior I'm seeing now, and I'm seeing a huge difference in my kids, are three years apart, my oldest to my youngest, big difference in terms of technology, big difference in terms of wiring and how they view the world. But for my, my son who's graduating and all of his friends, all they're looking for is tech startups. They're looking for startups. They don't want to look for, work for large corporations, they don't care if they have to live at home, they don't care if they have to live nine people in a room, you know, they want to be part of a startup, they want to be part of something that's starting from the ground up and they want to be creative. And it's just really interesting to see where their energies are and their, how they're viewing their employment versus, say, even a couple of years ago, what we were hearing from kids. So, again, I know we're talking about AP tonight, but even in terms of other, you know, more tech-oriented courses, and I think Penny had touched on engineering, but for even just gaming and different things like that, that these kids are really, really, I mean, they're passionate about. You know, I know we're looking, we're always very creative, but hopefully we're looking down those avenues too for kids who might not be going into AP or might not be going even into honors classes, but are very talented, very passionate about other areas that they will be able to be successfully employed in down the road.
I think one of the things that we discover is that if students are passionate about something, there usually is a way that they can get to an advanced level class in that, in that area, the computer science or the art or the music that we have available. So, it's just a matter, I think, of keeping our eyes and ears open to what the kids are inspired to do and see if we can stay one day ahead of the curve, because you know how quickly that changes. It's very hard to stay ahead of that, because the, the idea that we have and then we get trained to do it and we're going to teach them, oh, that's gone, let's go to the next thing. And that's, that's one of the challenges of the tech areas, keeping up with their interest and, and the expertise.
And I know this is also far more complex than it appears, because you need resources, you know? I mean, you can only be so creative, as we talked about before with our student, our populations and our buildings, you can only be so creative. And the same thing here, you could only be, you know, so creative too. So, again, you know, I know we have very limited, not limited resources, but we're very careful in terms of our budget. But I encourage you, I think we've been a little bit, we've been pulled in other directions maybe in the last couple of years with different things and so, I think it's really, it's a great time to be looking creatively at our curriculum and creatively at our schedule. So, I'm really pleased that you're doing this, so thank you.
Any other questions? Yes, Deanna?
Sorry, I just have one quick question regarding AP. One of the reasons I've heard expressed for why some students are not taking the AP exam is that if they're going into sort of a more technical, science, mathematical type of degree program after high school, that they feel like they might not be ready to skip that class at school when they get to college and, and some universities won't allow them to retake that class. I don't know, I, I just wanted to hear from you how often you might hear that as a reason for not taking.
My guess is that's probably more an urban legend than it is the real deal. It is far more likely, from my experience with advanced placement programs, that students will be required to retake something rather than they won't be allowed to retake something. So, of course, my area of expertise is math and science and so, I can only talk about that. I don't know if this is the same in English and history. But the advantage for students to have demonstrated that the entry-level class is one that they've mastered with a grade that's acceptable at the university, is that they get to move into the next level and they get to go deeper into their area of interest before their four years are up. They're going on the college's nickel, so to speak, than to have to take those classes after they've graduated. I don't believe that any responsible university would allow a student whose score was not sufficient to meet their needs to let them skip, if you will, that level. They would require them to take it. They don't want their students to come in and not be successful. And I think that's part of the confidence level for, for kids. If a student scores a five in advanced placement level exam, which is a very common score for many of them, I think they should leave it in the hands, if they have faith in their university, to decide should they take it over, because they're probably extremely well-prepared. And it's been my experience that that's the way it works out, that colleges know what this test tests and they know whether the student's score will make them be success, help them be successful in their university. So, I think it really is a bit of an urban legend.
Penny?
Just one quick comment, just when you're looking at the scheduling in other DURG A schools, I, you might be playing into it, but I think it'd be great also to look at some of the other excellent school districts in the area or nationwide, see what they're doing, like Chappaqua and Scarsdale, and see if they have something that we should be adopting.
I think that probably we'll be looking at competitive schools. I know they've done that through the literature. I don't know how far afield this committee has begun to go in terms of visiting. I wouldn't want to limit it to DURG A schools, because I know for a fact there are some excellent schedules out there in DURG B schools. I don't know that much about the New York, the New York system, but I think we would want to look at options, because when you are trying to create the perfect schedule, you want to have seen as many schedules with as many positives and being aware of the pitfalls as you can, because you don't necessarily want to adopt someone else's schedule. What you want to do is see how they use time to the fullest and can we create a schedule that helps us use time to the fullest.
Great. Saedra?
I just wanted to add a comment, just from what Deanna was mentioning. Last year, when we met with the students who had graduated and had gone to, they were freshmen in colleges, some of the comments that kind of came back, and one of them was that they were really appreciative that they were able to take some AP classes, because it did give some credits on their load. So, when they took their freshman load, they didn't have to take as many courses as some of the people who didn't have to take it. So, it was actually kind of nice and there's certain other advantages of having those AP credits. And one of them said too, that at that time, we didn't have the micro macro economic AP course, but they're saying that some of the other high schoolers had it. And when they went into the college course, it seemed like everybody knew what they were doing and so, for him, it was learning from scratch. And so, sometimes, I mean, he was able to take it again, you know, and, but I myself, you know, took calculus and I took it again at college, because it made me more confident. So, sometimes it's great just as an entry way to know and so, when you get into college, it makes it that much easier, because you know what to expect. So, again, with that urban legend that, you know, you can repeat it if you want to.
I wanted to say thank you for answering all our many, many questions and I know there were questions that came in probably all week long from the board and really appreciated very much. And we're also very appreciative of the high school and the faculty and the everyday job that they're doing, every day, meeting the needs of the kids and we thank you for that too.
Well, and I'd like to thank you on behalf of the high school. We are so blessed to be in this district and have the support that you provide to us. So, thank you very much and we'll bring you back information anytime you need it.
We're interested, as you can tell, so thank you. Moving now to our last item on the agenda, which are the announcements in future meetings. Oh, sorry, excuse me. Almost, how could I have forgotten that? Frank, my goodness, you would have gone all this time sitting here. Would you help us on the statement of the accounts, please?
The statement of the accounts, it covers through September, so that's year-to-date through September. And I just want to focus on two areas tonight. The, under contracted services, the professional services, there is two areas. One is the, in special education, there's, there was education and behavioral consultants that were encumbered in the month. And also, there was occupational, physical and speech therapy that, again, was, you know, was encumbered for the, for expenses through September and, you know, through the rest of the year, as far as we knew. And the other area is in the property services, under the maintenance repairs, the facilities department has, they have facility repairs and they also had contracts for their air conditioning and fire protection, those type of things. So, they've, again, encumbered funds for that to cover any invoices throughout the year. And in the software support, that area covers our Munis software, the, the ADP that we still have and also the, the school cash or the KEV area.
Do you have any other items you want to highlight?
No, those, those were the, those were the largest for, through September.
Changes. Anybody have any questions about the report? Or questions about any columns or areas? Looks as if everything is, everybody is, knows what's happening, so thank you very much.
All right, you're welcome.
Appreciate that.
Just, I'll just report quickly. Nancy was back to work today. And although she didn't have it in her for 14, 15-hour day to make it to the meeting, she did want me to send her back, so she's back in and ready to go.
Terrific. We appreciate all the people who've helped in the interim to fill in and do extra things, so we appreciate that.
Thank you.
Now, the announcements in the future meetings. Sorry about that, about the glasses, I missed that, it was important.
Well, the, at our next meeting, we will be, we anticipate having before you a field trip with, from the New Canaan High School debate team. They are expanding and growing and Ms. Goldhawk will be here to share some information with us. She's here tonight, but not for that purpose. We'll talk a little bit about that. We'll have an update about the SACS auditorium and the really good work that's, that's going on there. I'm there each morning, every week on Thursday mornings, along with Penny, Saedra and Hazel. So, just get the board updated a little bit on, on the things that are going on with that. And of course, the beginning of our budget season with our first reading of the budget assumptions, which as you know, we've been working on. They are, are statements of, sort of, statements forward around our budget that are tied to our district goals and the assumptions that we make as far as need goes and resource allocations, based on the goals that we set in the spring. So, I've been working with the cabinet, with the administrative team in sort of articulating those assumptions and those will be our guide as we then, those will go through a first and second read and then as the budget proposals begin, it'll be the assumptions that we've made around our district goals and ways to approach those goals that guide our work.
That's terrific. That's terrific. Tomorrow is the South School math program, is that correct, on our schedule? So that if anyone is planning to attend that, parents, and there is a presentation at 9:15 at South School, and one at 6:30 in the evening, and community members can also attend that one. Do you want to add some more to that? I'm sorry, I just turned around.
You got it all covered.
Well, it's, why don't you, you might want to add a little bit more about what it's going to be about, other than just math. I, the slip that went out explained a lot more in detail of the kinds of things that would be helpful to parents.
It will be a focus in the K through 5 math curriculum, giving updates on what we've done throughout the last couple of school years, also ways in which children can, you know, parents can assist their children at home, and looking at the math practical standards as well.
Terrific. Thank you very much. At this point, is there anyone who would like to give comments from the public? There'd be no one who wants to give comments from the public. May I have a motion to adjourn the meeting? Scott?
Second?
Thank you. Penny? All those in favor, please signify by raising your hands, and that's a unanimous vote of the entire board. Thank you very much.